Well, Ms. Martin votes first.
At this point, I'd like to call the Lowell School Committee Special Meeting to order. Let us begin by honoring America. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and again, welcome. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Laraba?
Here.
Mr. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda for the special meeting this evening, and that's a special order of business, and that would be the report of the Joint Athletic and Lowell High School Subcommittee Meeting that took place just prior to this meeting. So the Chair would like to recognize either Jackie Dougherty or Mr. Conway.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, the Lowell High School Subcommittee and the Lowell High School Athletics Subcommittee did meet. We just finished meeting. My colleagues were all in attendance. On the Subcommittee, I chair the Lowell High School Subcommittee, and Mr. Conway and Ms. Laraba are members of that committee. They were there. On the Athletics Subcommittee, Mr. Conway is the Chair. I am a member, as well as Mr. Leahy. Also in attendance were Ms. Martin and Mr. Leary. From the Administration, we had Superintendent Chris Augusta Scott, Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang. We had the Headmaster, Ed Rosemaric, and Athletic Director James DeProffio were also in attendance. We focus primarily on the athletics program at the high school. As Your Honor may recall, we cut, we asked the high school to cut $249,000 from that budget. We looked at reinstating some money to the programs. We decided that we would save the clubs piece of that for another meeting because we need more information about the clubs. So before us tonight, the Lowell High School and Athletics Subcommittees would formally make a recommendation. A motion was made by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Leahy, that the school committee reinstate $176,668 to the athletics line item in the budget, and I would put that before the full committee for approval. And at the same time, since we're not making any decisions with the clubs and sports, we needed to deal with that funding as well, but we could work with this motion first, please. Thank you.
The motion by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Laraba. Any further discussion? Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say that I, you know, I do plan to support this motion. I think bringing these monies back to our athletic department, I have been convinced of the importance of it. I think for us all, it's very easy to see that this is a, it's a challenging decision to make. It is, you know, making a choice that we're investing in athletics and at the expense of other things in our district. I appreciate the individuals who had come down for the Subcommittee meeting, and I think it's always great to hear from parents, and certainly to have the coaches discussing their reactions to this was helpful. And in all honesty, for me, it was really hearing a lot from students prior to this evening about the impact of athletics at the high school that really went a long way in convincing me that making this kind of decision and supporting this, it's really what made it possible for me to really see the value. So I will be supporting this $176,000 return to the athletics budget. I would just like to ask, having heard from some individual coaches with their recommendations, and I don't think it's an answer we can get tonight, but I do think that we are going to need to do some, to get some additional information. If this committee does make the decision to support this at the $106,000 level, which does eliminate, as we all recognize, several assistant coaching positions, if what the concerns are regarding liability, if individuals have stated publicly that there are safety concerns, and then there is a, there is an issue, I believe that those public statements leave us open to liability, and it could put us in an extremely dangerous position. So I would request through the Administration that we do the necessary due diligence to determine that the decisions we make today don't leave our district and our city open to actionable, should there be, should there be an accident, that there would not be action that could be taken against us based on the decision we're collectively making tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba, then Ms. DeLeary.
Just to piggyback on Ms. Martin's statements, if we do find that we do not have alternate funding sources, my hope would be that we then go ahead and reduce the number of students that are participating and look at the sports so that we are not in a position where we would have that kind of liability. It's, you know, obviously great to have a big football program or a big crew program, but if it comes down to a point where we've had to make these cuts and there is a safety issue, then by all means, I would hope that we're going to be looking at reducing the number of kids, as much as I hate to say that, but look at reducing the number of kids who participate in that program. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I just want to thank through you, to the Superintendent and to Mr. Lang, for doing, you know, yeoman's work, working with the high school headmaster and the athletic director. I think this information was very detailed. It did illustrate different ways of looking at it, cost per student, per sport, a lot of other good information to make some sound decisions, and a lot of information that we need to sit down with our unions and begin negotiations, not only over actual coaches' salaries, but also over, really, in terms of what programs we value and how we want to go forward from here. A lot of inconsistencies, but the best inconsistency that didn't occur was the fact that our boys and girls' sports are essentially, from parts of space, are equal. And that was very cool, and that should be going off to the, to the high school for that, because that's important, very important. One of the issues, I think, that, as I listened to this discussion and I asked some questions regarding two big questions. One was JV sports. And I think the JV sport issue, when I initially had thought of this with Mr. Leahy when we drafted our motion up, is that the amount of monies that we were trying to put in would restore JV sports, and that appears to be somewhat skeptical at this point, although we did get a commitment from the Administration to work hard to try to achieve those monies to keep JV sports. But ultimately, we really don't have a solid foundation right now to keep JV sports in a lot of areas, basketball, boys and girls, football. I didn't really get into the spring sports, but there is some inequities there. The numbers, for example, for lacrosse versus baseball are virtually equal, yet we don't have a lacrosse freshman team. I can imagine if we had a lacrosse freshman team, that the numbers, I think they were 58 for boys, 46 for women, girls, those numbers would go even higher, because a lot of kids can't make a JV team. They're starting out lacrosse as their first sport. So that's, these are areas that I think we need to start looking at as we get into negotiations. The obvious I saw, I think, is that the amount of staff we have for the crew team. The crew team with 86 individuals, you know, it's not even the river that's the issue. They're in a boat, so it's, and they have guidance and other people out there. It's really, if you're looking out in the parking lot, where we're sitting by the boathouse right on the highway, it's really open to all customers. We don't really have the ability to make it secure like the football field or like the high school gymnasium or like the high school pool. That's an area where we should be adding an additional coach because of those numbers. And to echo what Ms. Martin was just, clearly hitting on an important point, that's an area where we need an additional coach. We just do. I mean, just the numbers alone allow it. Football was something where I actually played for it for a long period of time, and I actually do, in insurance business, do a lot of disability claims. It's the second most dangerous catastrophic sport that you have. Cheerleading's number one. I mean, you have a violent collision sport. The numbers, when I asked Mr. DeProffio, why are the numbers at 147? I didn't believe the numbers. I just, they were huge. But actually, and you know some of them are going to go away, but if you're talking 106 kids have signed up already, we haven't even looked at the freshman program, and we're going to go up to 150. Realistically, yeah, 25 to maybe a full 50 students will drop off or will be, you know, won't be able to play for whatever reason. You're still going to have around, around number of 100 kids playing. So from a pure safety factor, from a violent collision sport, they need an assistant coach. Last year, because of some budget issues, we had to remove an assistant coach from the wrestling team. That's 60 members. A lot of other kids, young freshmen, have never been exposed to that sport. It's a sport where they do need some assistance in having an assistant coach. Luckily, we had, you know, a donation to help that out. That's another, although it's one-on-one, it's still a very, you know, a collision-contact aggressive sport. I am happy with the fact that we add the ski team back in. A lot of kids in Lowell are great skiers, but there's a few that are, you know, not-so-good skiers that want to give it a shot and try it, and we're affording that opportunity. So that's, that's very cool, and I'm very appreciative of it. I'm appreciative of the Committee's ability to take a look at this as well. But what I want to do, and I'm going to, it's not disrespect to the Administration or to my fellow Committee members, I'm going to make a substitute motion to add an additional $20,000 to the recommended budget of $176,688, for a total value of $196,688. And just one explanation of the finances that achieved to it, with $362,000 monies that are carryover from last year, with the recommendation numbers from the Administration, that's $207,000 rounded, reducing or increasing the additional $20,000 is about $187,000 in additional funds. We do have issues regarding clubs, and we do have issues regarding librarian media specialists, which we've asked for a recommendation from the Administration on how to deal going forward with that. Cuts have to be made to the sports program. We have to sit down with the unions and look at the salary structures and the inequities and the contract years, but I think at this point, given safety issues, given the fact that some of the JV programs might be in jeopardy, that we need to add additional funds to do that. The motion of $20,000 additional dollars would ask, really, and I'm not going to recommend adding a football coach or adding a basketball coach, I'm asking for the additional $20,000 for the Administration to go through and add assistant coaches where safety needs need to be. And that's really, you know, I can sit right here and say crew, which I strongly feel should have one, and I also would say football, which, if you're going to have 100 kids running around, running into each other with helmets, and you have a new football coach, frankly, there's no way he's going to know everybody on the football field the first few months. And having played football, there's injuries every day. 33 concussions alone should suggest to you that you need to have that supervision. Volunteers are good. There's a lot of good people out there, but you want someone on the payroll, so when we do get into potential issues, we have that defense to have, we have defense for the city solicitor when they have to defend that, if there are any issues. Thank you.
We need to second on Mr. Leary, second by Mr. Leahy. The Chair would like to recognize Mr. Conway, then Madam Superintendent, then Ms. Laraba. Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, I was just ready, I was just going to second that motion.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Right. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have to follow up on School Committee Member Martin's concerns with regards to the liability exposure. That's the first that Mr. Lang and I heard about the fact that the number of concussions and that it's a significant safety issue. So I really do need to go on the record, to Ms. Martin's point, and to say that, as I see in front of us, as this report states to you, to the extent that particular programs are not funded to the level that they need to be, other programs need to be cut so that we do support programs so that these issues don't come to the fore that there's safety issues out there. So for example, if the football coach is telling us as a body that it's safety concerns, that we're talking about concussions, and I personally do not know a lot about football, but I can't stand here tonight and hear what he said to us and bring forward this recommendation without asking for either a cut within the present budget of another team, if that's what we're going to do, and fully fund football to the safety levels of what the experts say, or two, to, as we go forward, again, we will, if you consider Mr. Leary's proposal, that's fine, but I still would even take that back to say, I want the football coach to sign off and say, these are the staffing levels that, you know, are reasonable, because if we don't have that, I think the Committee and this Administration is exposing themselves and to, you know, as Ms. Martin mentioned, to, you know, to a lawsuit position, and I think student safety needs to come first, and our, we're totally, you know, we are responsible to make sure that safety comes first and foremost. That may mean, as Ms. Laraba said, that we cap the number of players on the football team. Maybe that's the option. But I would like some discussion around this particular point of what the options are, because the first thing I'm doing tomorrow is having a conversation with the, you know, Athletics Department on the comments that were said here tonight and what we're planning to do to address them. So, you know, are we going to cap the program, which has never been done before, to whatever the safety levels? If we're, if Mr. Leary's recommendation goes forward and that gets us enough that we can have 20 extra children, fine, but if the proposal in front of us goes forward, how many children can we safely coach? That's really, I think, what we have to wrestle with now.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you, and Madam Superintendent, thank you for stating that so plainly. That is the major concern, is to make sure that we're offering students sports and they are safe in those sports. I have a concern with throwing another number out of thin air without knowing what that number would enable us to do. I mean, why don't we just say 30,000? Why don't we just say 40,000? You know, I said it before, you cannot hold the athletic department harmless. I would much prefer, I would much rather see them look at their budget lines and try to reduce that, or looking at possibilities of capping the programs if needed. We still have cut teachers, we have cut librarians, we've cut all over the place, and to just throw another number out of the air, I'm sorry, I think that is irresponsible. I said that before. You can't just throw a number out without knowing what that number means. I would feel comfortable with going with the current motion and asking Mr. Lang to look into what 20,000 might mean to us, or if there's another way in the budget, the athletic budget, that they can make those cuts to make sure that we are staffed at a safety level, but, you know, these last-minute, let's pull another rabbit out of the hat, I'm just not comfortable with.
Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think the substitute motion was irresponsible. I think that as School Committee people, excuse me, if we, we certainly listened to individuals that have spoke in front of us after the, after our initial meeting, and I think it certainly was clear after the football coach, Moore, spoke, that there was obviously a concern. And keeping in mind, as we all know, that we have certainly trimmed down that coaching staff down to, I believe, four coaches instead of the six or seven that we might have had. So I think that, that right there might constitute the thought of bringing in some additional monies that perhaps could, could fill that void. When we talk about the 31, was it 31 or 33 concussions last year, just as a reminder to the Committee, that was, that was with a larger staff than what the staff is proposed for next year. And I know that there was an informal study that was done in regards to this, and when they called around surrounding towns and cities, the average was between two and three individuals for each school that had concussions. So there was certainly a concern. The first thing that came to my mind was perhaps equipment. Was it faulty? And the answer that I received was no, was not faulty. So the bottom line here is, it certainly is something that, as the Superintendent said, she wants to look into, and I wholeheartedly agree that there is a concern, and why are the numbers so high? But I, I think that, again, it's, I don't believe this motion is irresponsible at all, and I don't believe that sports, athletics have, have been denied cuts, because they certainly have. It's something that we don't want to cut anywhere, obviously, but I think that if we take a look, some people, you know, some people are not athletic, they don't want to get involved with sports, but I'll tell you, if you take a look at it and you listen to the stories and also the lasting effects that athletics have on individuals, which we've talked about here before in the Committee, I think it's extremely important that we try to, to fund it as much as we possibly can. And again, it's not escaping cuts. Cuts are still going to be there, but I would, I would support the, the additional $20,000 by Mr. Leary's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, then Mr. Leahy, then Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think that, as we talk about, you know, the safety issues, and I, and I absolutely can recognize the Administration's position, to have heard tonight in a public meeting this information for the first time is unfortunate. We've been having these conversations for seven months. I understand that there have been some changes in personnel, and, you know, there's been a lot going on, but, you know, again, we are past the 11th hour. We are well past the 11th hour. And again, with inadequate information, we're being asked to make decisions, and that's just not a good environment, especially when we are playing things so close, so close to the edge in the season, to be, you know, having these kinds of poorly informed discussions. I think Ms. Laraba's point that perhaps the answer comes from shaving down the numbers of students participating, I think that's one of the few options available to us in our current financial situation, and, and I recognize that that can be a challenge for sports. I think, in all honesty, to, you know, we have to recognize that, yes, people had come into these positions with certain expectations, whether it was as coaches, perhaps even as parents, participating in these, in these activities, but the reality is, is that our situation changed. It has been no secret in this community, and, I mean, let's be honest, it certainly goes far beyond the environs of Lowell, but that this was an incredibly challenging budget season where cuts were being made. It's difficult to be, to look at a situation and say that we're in some way being unfair or irresponsible to have brought people on with a certain set of expectations, and now we find ourselves where we have to make cuts, that in some way we were, we didn't share this information, or we weren't above board when we made these, when these recommendations were made by the Administration for assistant coaching cuts. And I just think the only, you know, having come to the conclusion of supporting this $176,000 going back into this budget, I'm not comfortable going any further than that, and I think that we have to find our, we have to find our safety on the other side of this equation. I don't like the idea of having to have more aggressive cuts or having to not give more and more students these opportunities, but I don't see any other real solution. There's been absolutely no movement in trying to, to save money in this area, in terms of the stipends, in terms of our trying to find an agreement, working with our unions, working with the individuals who hold these positions, absolutely no movement. This Committee has moved over and over and over again, specifically in this athletic area. There are continuing motions to bring more and more money to the table because of our sincere concern for students and their, and the recognition of what an important role athletics play, and there has been no movement to meet us, certainly not in the middle, and nowhere even in between that. So I think that the only option that remains to us is to have to pare down these programs to ensure the safety of students who are able to participate, and hope that we can find other options for those that are in this current staffing pattern unable to participate.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I don't even know where to, to begin. The report we got tonight at the Subcommittee meeting was, I mean, you could tell there was a lot of work put in here. There's still a lot more work to be done. The seven of us sit here and we have to make these decisions, and I, and I make my comments with respect to all potters, but as was mentioned here, to start off, you know, this has been going on for months. In my eyes, no genuine effort from the teachers' union, who is in charge of these coaches, to negotiate. I mean, coaches have come up to me and said, I'd do it for free. Well, can they or can they not donate their salary back? That should have been clear by now. There are safety issues. We don't want to cap how many kids can go out for a team. We don't want to do that, but there should have been discussion in the last six months about just things that I brought up that I could be totally off-base. Can some kids pay for uniforms? Can they buy, how can teams contribute without imposing a $200 or $300 fee per student? Those should have been in the discussion. I mean, really, it's not a lot of money. I think that there's a safety issue. There's issues that, you know, like we said, we tried to negotiate salaries with this, and nothing's moved. Everybody says they want to help, but there's no plan in front of us. And I do support putting another $20,000, $25,000 back into it. We did have a proposal from the clerks. We've deferred it for the last two years, and I would put the question out, what's one more year? We could use that money. I know, I've heard from the Administration, and you have ideas and you want these five days. Can these, can, can the clerks, for instance, come in and make up that time in regular time? You know, let's have the discussion with them. There's some money there that we could use if we wanted to. I just think that, again, it's a shame that comes down to the students, and they're the ones that always suffer because we, as adults, cannot come together. I had an article here that I pulled out of the, off the Internet today. You know, it's talking about furloughs are a thing of the past. People aren't taking furloughs anymore. They're actually taking a cut in pay to help out, to save jobs, to save programs. I mean, that's where we are now. I just think it's a shame that, you know, again, we're in the 11th hour, we're in the 15th hour trying to do this, and who suffers? It's the kids, you know? So I think if we, the initial motion was great. I would have liked to have made, Mr. Leary made a motion to put another 20,000 in. We could get that from, one source would be the clerks' donation. It could come from another, another thing. But, you know, this should be done. I mean, this should have been done today. Coaches should have talked to, to the Administration, to the Athletic Director. He should have conveyed that to Mr. Lang, who is working so hard on this. I mean, there's still a lot of unanswered questions. I mean, can we tweak this and pull another 10 grand out of these, these numbers? Who knows? So I would be in support of, of adding more money to the, and supporting Mr. Leary's motion, but I still think that we need to address, as Ms. Martin brought up, some safety issues, and there's ways to do it, even if we're not going to get cooperation from the unions. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to start by saying I would not support throwing more money at this without a plan, and I actually am leaning very closely to what my colleague on the left had talked about, which is if we can't do the sport safely, given the funds we are thinking about putting back in, then we need to reconfigure the sports. We need to cap them, we need to look at perhaps eliminating. I would hate to go that route, but I'm sitting here as someone who remembers the impassioned speeches we heard when we were cutting librarians, or last, the budget before this last one, the year before, when we were talking about class size at the high school, and we had dance students coming up, telling us how much dance meant to them. We have consistently made very painful cuts, and this year, on top of last year, was really difficult. Paraprofessionals out of our elementary classrooms. And when we talk about money coming in from the charter school, whatever that number is, let's not forget, that money is accompanying the children who are going to come here, the children who have needs, who need to be taught, many of them who are going to be below grade level, they're going to need additional support. So that's not, here you go, Lowell, here's $260,000 or whatever it is, for nothing. That's a bunch of needy children who we have to educate. That is our core responsibility. And when we look at, and I was an athletic kid in high school, and I've, I have two kids at the high school now, both who'll be involved in sports and clubs. I definitely value the role they play, but our core mission is instruction. And when we look at pay, stipends that are above industry standards, in the context of the number of cuts that we've made, I just, it's enough to go the $176,000, to reinstate that and say, yes, we have a lot more to look at. We have a year to pour over the programs, the way We have a year to pore over the programs, the way the money is being spent, how are we using the Friends of Lowell High School funds? I mean, maybe we need to be looking at less at athletic scholarships and more at actually funding the programs. But the ultimate issue of safety, and I hearken back to what Ms. Martin had said earlier, I believe that was brought up by a coach. Because when people are standing, fighting for their job or their area, whether it's a librarian, near to tears, telling us how important librarians are to kids and their education, or whether it's a coach talking about a sport he loves, and I don't doubt that he was sincere in his comments, but I really need a report that tells us, okay, what is a safety standard that we need to uphold, not just for football, for, for all our sports? And then if we need to rethink those programs, then we'll do it then. But to come out now and just throw another 20 grand, and in terms of where we get that, the 176, we really, you know, we're taking from other programs. That's where we're getting it. We're taking from books, we're taking from computers, from technology, that's where we're getting that money. We're not sitting on a pile of dough that we can just randomly throw out. I think it's, it's a very painful decision. I feel very strongly that we need to work with our, our staff, that, you know, we need to work at the table, as Mr. Leahy says, that we need to come together and look at solutions. But the solution is not to keep throwing money at it. That's not the solution when we don't have the money. And I just want to end on one final thing. I know that it was commented earlier that we have equity. I'm not feeling so confident about the equity. I mean, all right, we have 18 offerings for boys, 17 offerings for girls, we're spending $125,000 more on boys' sports than we're spending on girls. We know that we've got some coaches, I think softball was one that we talked, that the salaries are a little off. I mean, that's one area we need to look at. The spending is one area. Whether there are other options for fundraising down the road is another area. But there's a lot to be done in the next year. But tonight, my goal would be to bring forward the funding that was recommended by the administration that would keep our programs intact, and then look very carefully at the safety issue in terms of how we, what our next move needs to be. Thank you.
Mr. Leary, then Ms. Laraba.
Thank you. You know, as far as equity, I wasn't going to touch base on equity. I have a daughter who played three sports in high school and plays a sport in college. I would defend, I would, girl sports over boy sports, if you want to put bluntly, they have that, they should have that under Title IX, have the equal amount of money to be put into it. I think they do, but all due respect to my colleague. And if there isn't, as a crew team is one item, I think I touched base on, is something that's not properly funded. I think we should have more coaches for the crew team. I respect my colleague, Ms. Martin, tremendously, but I think we should be adding sports and club programs. One of the, one of the good, there's a lot of good things about having one high school, but one of the problems is a lot of kids can't make the team, and they're not good enough to make the team because there's not a lot of spots. And it, and it's true, when you get 147, 150 kids on a football team, 86 on a crew, 100 on track, they're not all participating all the time. That's fact. You know, but, but I think we should be trying to increase it. As far as, you know, library and media specialists, that's the terrible vote. I think Mr. Leahy and I have been proactive, putting a motion, looking for plans and looking for ways to bring a lot of those cuts back. The only reason why I'm speaking now is because someone said it was an irresponsible money out of the air. You know, I could easily do this myself, easily, in my own opinion, think, you know, one football coach, maybe two football coaches, definitely one crew, maybe two crew coaches would be appropriate, and that'd come around 20 grand. I, I didn't try to be disrespectful to the committee and to the efforts put in by Mr. Lang. But the reality is that some of these sports do require more supervision because of pure numbers and because of the actual athletic event taking place. I mean, there's a lot of inequities that I haven't mentioned. Lacrosse team, why don't we have a freshman lacrosse team? For boys and girls. We have it for baseball. You'd have a lot of kids coming out for lacrosse, playing freshmen. A lot of them can't make the team as a JV because they're not good enough. That's, we can't solve that issue today. I respect people that don't want to vote for this, and I thank them for taking the time to put $176,000, and I really do. But I don't want to be called irresponsible by people. I am not irresponsible. This is something that means a lot, that does have, we do have the funds in certain areas to do it. We're not overlooking teachers, we're not overlooking instruction. Frankly, this is what keeps a lot of kids coming to school and coming to Lowell High School. Again, if you don't want to vote for it, that's, that's fine, I respect it. $176,000 is an appropriate move, it'll salvage the program, we can work things out. But to say we pulled the number out of thin air is just simply wrong, and a little disrespectfully takes some exception to it. Thank you.
Ms. Laraba.
Thank you. Certainly did not mean to offend you, Mr. Leary. It does seem, though, that it came out of, a round number out of thin air. And when I said irresponsible, probably a poor choice of words, but I think to throw more money at it is to put the cart before the horse. I think we have a superintendent and staff who heard about safety issues, and that's her job to look at this, and if she, upon looking at this, finds that she needs more money, then it's her responsibility to come up to us and say, you know what, we've looked at this situation, the coaches brought up safety issues, we've realized that we didn't look at this quite properly the first time around, and we need to make some adjustments. But for us to quarterback it based on comments that are made, I do not feel is the right thing to do. In terms of accepting the clerical union's offer, I think it's unfortunate to be brought up here, where we've already discussed that offer. The administration has already said that they feel that it's important to have those people in place in school at those times, and we, as a group, supported that decision and did not accept the offer for them to not work. We need them in the, the decision was made that we need them in the classroom. Certainly, if they want to donate that time, that would be wonderful, but, you know, you can't make somebody work for free, it's, it's not, you know, it's not that, something you can make them do. But we, as a group, supported the administration that they needed these people at that time, and I think to bring it up in a last-minute conversation is just not supportive of the administration, especially when we've had that conversation several times. I've already said I'm not going to support throwing another 20. If the superintendent and her staff, upon looking at the situation, cannot find some ways to make cuts, or find that it's not feasible to make caps, you know, we can bring the discussion around again, but as Ms. Martin said, we've discussed this over and over again for several months. And, you know, athletic department cannot be held harmless, but I certainly don't want anybody to have a safety issue. But I'm not comfortable with saying, let's throw all the money back in.
Mr. Conway?
Move the substitute motion, please.
Second? All those in favor of moving the substitute motion signify by saying aye. Vote, roll call.
To move the motion. Ms. Martin?
No.
No, it's just to move the motion.
Move the motion, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved, so now we go right to the substitute motion, and that's add additional $20,000 to that money, that 176, 668, where the administration thinks safety issues are attached. Okay? Ms. Martin?
No.
Mayor Melonazo?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Ms. Laraba?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Four ayes, I mean, three ayes, four nays, it's defeated.
Original motion is on the floor, roll call.
Okay. Now say add $176,668. Okay. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven ayes passes.
And that, that number is 176,668. 668. Madam Superintendent?
Again, the recommendation embedded within this report clearly states that if we have determined that a sport can, at the present recommended, the present recommendation cannot be fully supported, we recommend the elimination of another team so that all the teams that are operating can operate within the safety zone, within proper parameters. We did hear this evening, for the first time, from the football coach that has clearly put us on notice that we are liable with these present staffing levels. So with these present staffing levels that are in this report, I'm left operationally to go forward doing two things. One, as suggested by Ms. Martin and Ms. Laraba, to reduce the enrollment operationally. If I'm given this report, so this has just been voted in at these staffing levels, so these staffing levels for the football team have just been voted for that amount of money, so I will tomorrow morning speak with the athletics director and ask him to please ensure that the enrollment for that team is at safety levels. That's, that's what I would do based on this conversation tonight. But, but again, we have, and I know the, the crew issue has come up, but we, again, we have had the conversation, again, here tonight with the athletics director, that safety has not been a concern that came out of, from that particular unit. But when safety issues are brought to my attention, it's my responsibility to take a stand with you to say, hey, we have to address this issue. The other option, as I see it, is, as the recommendation in this particular proposal, to look at, for argument's sake, the most expensive sport or whatever, and to make a cut so that we can, the programs that we do offer, we know are offering, we are operating them safely. Those are my two options, and I just want to be clear with the committee, because I know this is a sensitive issue, and going forward, you know, there's going to be, a lot of people have a lot of different opinions, so I want feedback.
Ms. Martin?
I'd make the recommendation, and I'd certainly entertain any kind of, you know, opinions from my colleagues as well, but based on what we've heard tonight, based on kind of the, the place we find ourselves right now, my recommendation would be that we go back to the athletic director, and there are basically two options across the board. One is to find volunteer coaches or, or other monies, whether it be from the, the other fundraising efforts by the coaches and whatnot. That is the one solution open to them. If that does not, if they do not meet the staffing criteria through donated resources, then the, the option would be to have to pare down the team to a safe level for the number of coaches that are there. And I would, those are the only two options I would, I would see. I mean, and I, I can't say strongly enough, we all live and breathe here in the city of Lowell, and we know how generous this community is. And I think we particularly know how strong the support is for our athletics teams, because we have been bombarded by, by this, you know, so many people who are so vested and, and want to be part of the solution. And I think that, you know, the, the athletic director certainly has intimated that there's, there's cause for optimism, that we would be able to, on a volunteer basis, fill some of these positions, whether it's parents or just sports, sports people who want to be part of the solution. So I, I could certainly see that as a viable solution. But I, I don't think we're at, the only other way we solve the problem of safety is making sure our numbers are appropriate. So I would be comfortable with that as a motion, and I would defer to my colleagues if there are any other...
Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Chair recognizes Mr. Leahy. On the motion?
Well, I wanted to speak before she made the motion. I didn't even know what your motion was. I'm just, what do we, can I talk about what I wanted to talk about, or do we have to talk about the motion first? I mean...
We have, we now have a motion that's been seconded, it's on the floor. The motion's on the floor.
I really don't understand what we just discussed there. I mean, if, if we're gonna, we just voted to add money back in, but if it's going to be safety issues, I mean, what do we, we're not going to have any programs then. We trimmed all our staffing levels down over the last few years, so what I just heard was, we're not going to have football, we're not going to have cross-country, we're not going to have crew. So I don't know what that means.
I think that Madam Superintendent's going to meet with Mr. DiProffio tomorrow and talk about the fact that this money's been put back into the athletic budget, that she needs, we all need assurances from the, from the athletic director that the safety of the students is paramount.
Right, but I don't...
We end up having to pare down from 147 football players to 130 football players based upon the staffing levels of our coaches and assistant coaches, that's what we'll have to do. That's what the administration will bring back to the committee.
All right. Well, I just think that's wrong. That's my opinion. I don't need a report to tell me that 100 kids on the river with two coaches isn't safe. I know it's not safe. I mean, this is so frustrating. I don't know, you know, I don't, it, this just blows my mind that we're sitting here talking about this again, and we're trying to do something good here, and I guess, I don't know.
Mr. Arty, then Mr. Conway. Did you have your hand up? I thought you had your hand up earlier.
I just wanted to, like, throw my two cents as we go forward. As distasteful it is, as it is, to think about limiting the number of students who can go out for a particular sport, I would prefer that route to eliminating an entire sport. I would prefer to try to keep our, all our offerings intact and just reduce the number that, I mean, if we're looking at, I think the two sports that we're concerned about with safety, I mean, football because the football coach brought it up, but crew because we are aware we've got 86 children on the river. I mean, I think we do have to have the safety issue cleared up right away, but I just would like to say that if we're looking at options, I'd prefer to limit the number of enrollment in a sport than eliminate a sport at this point.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, one statement was made tonight, and all of a sudden we have a knee-jerk reaction, and talk about capping the number of students and perhaps eliminating sports and so forth because of one statement that's made. And I think that before we jump to any conclusions, I think that we have to take a step back. As the superintendent said, you should be sitting down with the athletic director. And also, I would include, not just the athletic director, I'd include the, the headmaster and the city solicitor to find out, let's, let's have the city solicitor perhaps do some research on this. I think also what you need to do is to take a look at, let's do some comps in the surrounding towns and cities and find out, let's find out what, what the ratio they might have to their, you know, in their athletic programs, and see if we're far off. I think that when you take a look at it, I don't think you're going to find our, our numbers far off at all. I think they'll probably be right in line, but again, that's a little bit of a guesswork on my part. But again, before we jump to any conclusions, let's get all the figures and facts in front of us, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba, then Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. Also, as part of that, just to make the party bigger, part of that conversation, perhaps with coaches, I mean, Mr. Zachariah stood there and said that he had some ideas to save money in his budget line, and, and his point was if you, if you cut the ski team, it's cut for several years until they can get back in the program, and that would be something that would be a shame because they do quite well. But, but have the conversation with the coaches and say, listen, your budget is $10,000, what can you do to, and not even just coaches' salaries, but equipment, and, and try to work some ways to, to, to save some money. I mean, they're the ones who are dealing with it day to day, so they would have, you know, those kind of ideas.
Mr. Arty?
Thank you. I think that that kind of recommendation is something we will be doing ongoing through the year, but in terms of the whole safety issue up front, I would think the first place to start would have the, have the athletic director check with the MIAA about what are the regulations, what are the guidelines? Because, I mean, we've been playing high school football for how many years? I'm sure they have information, and as my colleague says, perhaps it's not as out of whack as we were led to believe by one statement tonight. So I think going forward, we just need some more information. But I don't know if that gives you a sense of where we're coming from with the safety issue.
Madam Superintendent?
Again, not to overstate the fact, but I cannot have a head coach from the football team come and make the statement that over 30 children received a concussion last year, and that this staffing level and this proposal by this administration would put children at risk of concussions, and me not make an issue of it on the floor tonight. So it's really not just any old fact, it puts us all and children in harm's way. So we take that safety issue very seriously. I do appreciate Ms. Martin's motion. I think that's, I think that's a good way to go forward. Again, I do think that we have to give, to fund it to its, you know, optimal levels. We'll not bring people to the table to creatively think about, how are we going to fund these programs that we cannot, no longer afford? And if we take the approach of, okay, we can only, for safety reasons, based on standards, to your point, Ms. Doherty, there are standards out there, and I'm thinking, when we do... out there. And I'm thinking, when we do, um, do surveys with other towns, which we already have, uh, done with regards to stipends and others, we will find, in fact, that many of our teams are more heavily staffed than other towns. But we can bring that information forward as well, even at these levels. So, that's why tonight, the safety issue, to be quite frank, I do not appreciate hearing, nor should the committee, on the floor. Um, safety is first and foremost for all of us in this room, of our students. And if it was, uh, you know, if it was an approach to ensure that that team got everything it needed, it really does have us over a barrel, because it, it, it does require us, we will ensure that staffing levels for football are at industry standard, and that our students are safe. To do that, and, and at the levels, if we can afford 100 children to play football, it'll be 100. The reason why I really like that particular formula, is because that will encourage, if in fact they want more children to play, the booster clubs to fundraise for the additional coaches, because that is what we have to do in the context of cutting millions of dollars out of our classrooms, across the board. And they have the fundraising arm that our chemistry teacher doesn't have, that our English teacher doesn't have, but these booster clubs do. So I think if we, you know, leave a margin of, let the community rise to the occasion to the best that they can, and, um, as we go forward, you know, we need to work together to fund these programs. But I just want to be clear, that I do not think the committee is over-concerned, or overreacting to the comments of the head coach tonight.
The discussion on the motion, roll call.
You want me to read it back?
Yes.
Okay. Have the superintendent go back to the Athletic Director. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Have the superintendent go back to the Athletic Director. One, to find volunteer coaches or other money. Two, if there is no solution, and if the sport does not meet staff criteria, the option is to, uh, pare down the team to the level of the coaches.
Safety criteria, rather than staff criteria?
Okay, oh, I'm, maybe you did. I took downstairs, okay, so it's safety criteria, sorry, okay, sa- safety. Okay?
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millanazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Ms. Laraba. Before we do that, Mr. Lang?
Yeah, uh, we weren't gonna be handling the, uh, clubs and activities at the high school tonight, but on the fourth page of the memo that I provided with you, I laid out a couple of actions, if, I would recommend you take those tonight, and that will defer the matter to another evening, but you'll be, uh, transferring some money, and also requesting certain information back from the high school to, uh, to make those. So if you look at the fourth page of the memo, I would just recommend you take the first two actions prior to adjournment.
If I could, those, uh, those two actions are to transfer the line item within the Lowell Public Schools FY 2011 budget of $72,845 for student activity advisor stipends to the Lowell School Committee's suspense account. Motion by Mr. Larry, second by Ms. Doherty, any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millanazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
The next item, request a report and recommendations from the staff of all high school detailing each club activity for the 2009, 2010 school year. Information within the report should include the following: name of club, club advisors, stipend paid, purpose of the club, activity, number of club activity participants, overall number of members, as well as actual participation rates for meeting and events, schedule of times, club activity, meet, outcome of meetings, products, annual reports submitted by club advisor documenting activities, participation effectiveness. Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Larry.
Sorry, could I just add one item to that bullet? And I had a motion on this, similar to this, not as extensive, a couple mu- during the budget cycle. I think some of the clubs do get revenue. I'd like to add a, a line item that if students are required to pay to participate in the club, I think that should be included in the report. That would be my only addition to that. Thank you.
That's fine with the group, okay. Uh, motion, second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millanazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
And then we're being asked to convene a meeting of the Lowell High School Subcommittee during the month of August, to review the, um, report and recommendations, so we can bring it up at the September 1st, 2010 School Committee Meeting. I don't know if we need that in a formal motion, but just for informational purposes, or do you want that in a formal motion? Put that in a, okay, convene a meeting of the Lowell High School Subcommittee to review the report and recommendations prepared by the high school staff during the month of August, and consider formal action with regard to funding the various clubs and activities at the September 1st, 2010 School Committee Meeting. Motion by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millanazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Ma- oh, seven ayes approved.
That's okay.
Go on.
Any, any further, any further items to come before the committee this evening? Hearing non-motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Larry, the committee stands adjourned. Thank you very much.
868.
868.